सत्ये न दीपयेत् ओम तत्सवितूर्वरम्म रूपम् चोतिहि परस्य धीमहि यन्नक्षत्ये न दीपयेत् सत्ये न दीपयेत् ओम तत्सवितूर्वरम्म रूपम् चोतिहि परस्य धीमहि यन्नक्षत्ये न दीपयेत् सत्ये न दीपयेत् ओम तत्सवितूर्वरम्म रूपम् चोतिहि परस्य धीमहि यन्नक्षत्ये न दीपयेत् सत्ये न दीपयेत्
Thank you sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Live Divine पैलवदर काहे नम्म मनिवरियम उरिंगिणैते इंदा वायपने नमक्के एर्पडत्ति कोडुथुले श्री अन्नैक्यम, भगवानक्यम, नम्म दन्नृयायम, वणकत्तयम अवर्गलद पोर्पादंगलिल, मुदलिल समर्पिपो इत्तरनतिल, नम्म मनदिल तोन्रम, ओवर सिंधन्यायम नम्म पेसम ओवर वार्तयम, अवर्गलक्क कानकियाहे समर्पिपो अनिवरक्यम, मालेवणक्यम Live Divine ले चैप्टर 22 पात्तित्रक्रो, The Problem of Life अल्ल पोन सेशन वरिक्यो, सिक्स्थ पैरग्राफ वरिक्यन्म्म पातो इंदा सेशनले मेयरकुंडतोड़ल्लाम पोन सेशनले एन्न पातोंगरते नम्म ब्रीफान इनेव कोरल्लाम इंदा चैप्टरले, The Problem of Life अब्दिंगरतले, भगवान एन्न ओर अडिपड़े करत्ता एन्न कोरिकिन्नर इन्नराल लाइफले तोन्र इल्ला प्रॉब्लेट्कुम, इंदा Consciousness Force इदे इरण्डेक्कुम इडैलाना, ऊरवहल, दिरण्डक्कुम इडैलाना, ऊरव रैदिया, ऊरविन अडिपड़ेगिल्दा द वार्विन प्रश्नेगल आमेखिन्नरदे अब्दिंगर एप्पडिन पातो अब्दिना लाइफ अब्दिंगरदे एन्न अब्दिंगरदे, नम्म लास्ट टू चैप्टर्स रे रंब चलिवा पातो, लाइफ अब्दिंगरदे चित्सक्तीनोड़े वेलिप्पाड़ अब्दिंगरदे पातो, Conscious Force अदनोड़े एक्सटर्नल एस्पेक्ट तान, लाइफ आ मैनिफेस्ट आवदे अब्दिंगरदे पातो सो लाइफ अब्दिंगरदे, Consciousness Force चित्सक्ती चित्सक्ती वंदे, यदनिन वेलिप्पाड़ना, चित, Consciousness नोड़े वेलिप्पाड़ इदुबे इरण्डमेय वंदे, सच्चिदानंदाविनोड़े आम्संगल अदिलाल द लाइफ अब्दिंगरदे, Consciousness Force आ नम्म वेलिप्पडिहिन्नरदे आना, इंगे रण्डा एस्पेक्ट रुकु, ओन्न कॉन्शसनेस रुकु, चित्त रुकु इन्नोन्नो फोर्स रुकु इंदा लाइफले वंदे कॉन्शसनेस वंदे एन्न अलावको वंदे मेलोंगी इरक्कु इरक्किन्नरदो अंद अलावको वंदे, नमक्को वंदे तेलिव कडेक्यो एन्न अलावकु कॉन्शसनेस वंदे, कीर, कीर निलेले सैल्बर्टु वेरुम सक्तीन सैल्बाड़ मात्रम मेलोंगी सैल्बड़ुम्बोरुदे नमक्को वंदे एल्लाविदम्मान प्रश्नेगलम वरिहिन्नरदे सो अदिनाल दम भगवानंदोर अडिपड़े करत्ताह एन्न कोरिकिन्नर इन्नराल एप्पडी कॉन्शसनेस इरक्किन्नरदो, अप्पडि दान द फोर्स रुको अदे ओटी दान वार्वु आमय्यम अब्दिंगर सो कॉन्शसनेस वंदे हायर लेवल रुक्युम्बोरुदे सैल्बड़कोड़िय निलयम, उयर निलेले रुको वार्वुन नम्मलक्क अदे ओटियमय्यम कॉन्शसनेस कीर निलेले रुकरप अदरिर रुद वेलिप्पडिहिन्नर सक्तीयम, अव्वार दान रुको नम्मलोड़े वार्वुम अम्मार दान अमय्यम, इंदा करत्ते अडिपड़ेल, अडिपड़याकुंडरदान भगवान मेलम मेलम, इदे विलक्तिहिन्नर इदल अम्किमाह नम्म वंदे इंदा कॉन्शसनेस वंदे, कॉन्शसनेस नोड़े मून्र निलेहले विलक्किहिन्नर मुदल निले एब्दिना नादर नान्गन निलेहले विलक्किहिन्नर मुदल निले वंदे अनैत्तिरक्कुम मूलमान इंदा सच्चिदानंदा निले अदिदान वंदे, आदि निले अंद निलेले एब्दिरुक कॉन्शसनेस अब्दिना इन्फिनिटारुकिन्नरदे, एल्ले कडंद इरक्किन्नरदे, ओरुमई तन्मियुड़न निरक्किन्नरदे इंदा वडिवंगल, अदनोड़े सैल्बाड़गल, अदल ईडुपट्टालुम, अदन इकाडंद निले इरक्किन्नरदे ट्रांसेंडेंट लेवल रुक्किन्नरदे अदिनाल, अंदा कॉन्शसनेस अंद निलेले रुक्कदनाल, अदलिरुद्दे वेलिप्पड़कोड़िय सक्तीयम अदे आम्संगले कुंडरदाहा आमेखिन्नरदे इन्फिनिटारुकिन्नरदे, अंद वन्नसोड़ा इरक्किन्नरदे इदु वंदे, सच्चिदानंदावी ओटिय आरंभ निले, अनैत्तिरक्कुम मूलमान आदि निले, इदे, इदे इंदो फर्स्ट स्टेटस इन्नर भगवान विलक्किहिन्नर अडितद वंदे, नम्म प्रबंजत्तल वंदे मैनिफेस्टेशन नडकिन्नरदे, वेलिप्पाड़ नडकिन्नरदे मुदलले जडन निलेले दान, सृष्टि तोंगिहिन्नरदे सो द जडन निलेले कॉन्शसनेस एब्दिरुकन्म्म पातो अब्दिना जडन निलेले कॉन्शसनेस वंदे ओर सबमर्स्टार रुकु ओर उल्ल अमिर्द द कानपडिहिन्नरदे Self-believers इन्नर भगवान कोरिकिन्नर, अदि तन्नैताने अरियाद निले इरुप्पद अंद निलेले दान कॉन्शसनेस इरक्किन्नरदे, इंगे वेरुम सक्तीदान मेलोंगी सैल्बड़ुगिन्नरदे इंदा कॉन्शसनेस उड़ारु निले, एदु कोरित्त अरियाद निले इरक्किन्नरदे इन्नराल तन्नै सार्न्द सक्तीदान अदे, अदे इयक्किहिन्नरदे इन्नर निले, इन्नर अरियाद निले, कॉन्शसनेस इरक्किन्नरदे, उड़ारु निले इरक्किन्नरदे वेरुम सक्तीन सैल्बाड़ तान अदि कानपडिहिन्नरदे इंदा, अदलिरुद्दे, कॉन्शसनेस मुरुवधमाह तन्नै मरंद निले इरुप्पद सक्तीन सैल्बाड़ुम, ओर मुर्कतनमान सैल्बाड़ आह ओर असैदनत, ओर उनर्वट्र निले इन सैल्बाड़ आह तान, इंदा सदन निले इल कानपडिहिन्नरदे अदु वंदे ओर मेकानिकल इंपल्स, ओर यंद्रगतील सैल्बडिहिन्नरदे अदनोड़े विजयविल्ल पातो अब्दिना, ओर विवत्तु बोलन रुको, सिलसमयम ओर हॅप्पी कोइंसिडेंस ओर मगिच्चि तरकोड़िय सैल आह अमय्यम एल्लामय वंदे ओर चान्स ओर तच्चयलाह नड़प्पोदुपोल तोठरम अलिकिन्नरदे इदु वंदे तोठरम दान, इदु वंदे सदन निले इल कानपडिहिन्नरदे भगवानिंगम अम्किमान ओर करत्ते एन्न सोलिकिन्नर इन्नराल उनर्वट्र निले इल सक्ती सैल्बड़ुवुदुपोल कानपट्टालुम कोड अदरक्क पिन्नाल इंदा ओर उझुंग इरक्किन्नरदे, राइट इरक्किन्नरदे, रुथम सान्स्क्रिटले रुथम इन्नर कोरिकिन्नरो अधिमनतिन ओर आम्समान इंदा रुथम, ट्रूथ कॉन्शसनेस अदनोड़े ओर आम्समान रुथम अदु, उनर्वट्र निले इलम, अदि दान वज़्नडत्तिहिन्नरदे ओर पेर उन्मय सत्यम इदुम इंदा, उनर्वट्र निले इलम कोड वज़्नडत्तिहिन्नरदे इन्नर करत्ते भगवान कोरिकिन्नर, इदु सदन निले इल कानपडिहिन्नरदे अदेपोल अडितद मनम, मनम इन्नर निले इल वरुम्बोरुदे, इंदा कॉन्शसनेस वंदे ओर प्रिवुपट्टन निले इल कानपडिहिन्नरदे प्रिवुपट्टन निले इल कानपड़ुम्बोरुदे बेवेर मयंगलिल तन्नै इर्तिकुंड, इंदा उनरु निले वेले सैकिन्नरदे It limits itself in various centers बेवेर मयंगल्ल तन्नी कोवित्तुकुंड, इंदा उनरु निले तनितनियाह वेले सैकिन्नरदे ओवर मयमम तन्नोड़े नोकत्ति नेरेवेट्रिकुलिकिन्नरदे मत्र मयंगलिन सैल्बाड़ कुरुत्त, मुत्री अरियामय अदु सैल्बड़ुगिन्नरदे ओवनरीयम अदु वंदे, ओर प्रिवुकुट्टट्टन निले इलम, ओर एदरेदरान निले इलम दान अदु कानिहिन्नरदे अदराल, द अनैत्तिरक्कुम पिन्नुल्ल, अंद यूनिटी अदु कोरित्त अदु अरियाविल्ल इदुमारी ओर कॉन्शसनेस, प्रिवुपट्ट कॉन्शसनेस इंदा निले इल रुकरप अदरिर रुद वरकोड़िय सक्तीयम, अदनोड़े सैल्बाड़ुम, अव्वार दान अमेखिन्नरदे इदु वंदे, नाम वार्कोड़िय, इंदा वार्वु निले, इन्नर भगवान कोरिपडिहिन्नर एनिन्नराल, ओवर तनि मनिदनुम, अवुनोड़े त्याविय पोर्ति सैवदरकाहतान अवन वार्गिन्नर मत्र अवर्गलिन त्याविगलयो, विरुप्वरुप्वरुप्वरुयो अवन गवनत्तिर एडुत्त कोल्वदे इल्ल इदनाल एन्न नडकिन्नरदे इन्नराल, ओर प्रिवुपट्ट सक्ती, ओन्रय ओन्रय एदरक्कुम सक्तीगलिन सैल्बाड़ु नडकिन्नरदे मनंगलकुड़े, मनंगलकुड़े, मावरपट्ट एड़ंगल तोन्रिहिन्नर, एदरेदरान मुरन्बाड़गल एर्पडिहिन्नर मावरपट्ट करत्तकल एन्ट तोन्रिहिन्नर इन्नराल, ओवर इंदा मावरपट्ट करत्तकल तोन्रुम्बोरुदे इंदा भगवानिंगम अम्किमान ओर करत्ते एन्न, एन्न कोरिपडिहिन्नर इन्नराल करत्तकल बेवेराह इरक्कुम, मनिदरगल कड़िये मावरपट्ट करत्तकल इरुद्दालुम कोड ओर करत्ते मत्र ओर मावरपट्ट करत्तिरक्क अवश्यम इन्नबदे, पुरियाद निले इरक्किन्नरदे इन्नर भगवान कोरिपडिहिन्नर एनिन्नराल, अनैत्तुमय, एदरेदरान निले इल मावरपट्ट निले इरुद्दालुम कोड अवेहल ओन्रोड़ ओन्र ओन्र, ओन्रोड़ ओन्र, ओर इनरियामयाद निले इल दान अवय इरक्किन्नर आनाल, मनिदनोड़े अरियामय अदे उनरामल इरक्किन्नरदे, इन्नर भगवान कोरिपडिहिन्नर एनिन्नराल, अनैत्तुमय, ओर मुजमयान ओन्रिन पगदिगल दान आनाल, इंदा पगदिगल, अंद मुजमय तन्मय अरियाद निले इल सैल्बडिहिन्नर इन्नर करत्ते कोरिपडिहिन्नर, इदु एन्न निले इल अब्दिना मून्रावधि निले, इंगे इंदा कॉन्शसनेस वंदे प्रिवुपट्टन निले इरक्किन्नरदे कॉन्शसनेस प्रिवुपट्टन निले इरक्कदनाल, अदरिर रुद सैल्बड़ुम सक्तीयम प्रिवुपट्टन निले इल सैल्बडिहिन्नरदे इदु मनिदनोड़े वार्वु, तर्पोदु अमेन्दुल्ल निले इदु दान मून्रावधि निले इन्नर भगवान कोरिपडिहिन्नर अडितद नान्गावधि निले नान्गावधि निले दान इंगे निले इल पातो अब्दिना, इंदा मून्रावधि निले इल कानकोड़िय, इंदा कोरेहिल्ल इल्ला इंगे कानपड़ुवदे इल्ल, इंगे वंदे डायवर्सिटी रुकु, यूनिटी रुकु, रण्डमेय रुकुद ओरुमई तन्मयम इरक्किन्नरदे, पन्मई तन्मयम इरक्किन्नरदे ओरुमई तन्मय, पन्महतन्मय, तन्नुल कोंडदाहा इरक्किन्नरदे इंदा तनिपट्ट अमयपुम, कोटुमत अमयपुम, ओन्रोड़ ओन्र, ईसैंदु सैल्बडिहिन्नर, ईसैयुड़न सैल्बडिहिन्नर अदिलाल, ओन्रय पन्मई तन्मय इवेहलकुल, वेरुबाड़ इरुप्पद इल्ल इप्प इत्तके निले इल दान अंद उनरु निले कॉन्शसनेस इरक्किन्नरदे अदिलाल, अदरिर रुद अदन मूलमाह सैल्बड़ुम, सक्ती, फोर्स अदुम अव्वारे सैल्बडिहिन्नरदे इंद अड़तल पातो अब्दिना, द वार्वु वंदे, उयर निले इदु इदु वंदे अधिमानसन निले, सार्न्द निले, सुप्रमेंटल लाइफ, इदु फोर्थ स्टेज अब्दिंगरदे इंद अड़तल वार्वु वंदे, लाइफ वंदे, इट बेस्ट ऑन यूनिटी ओरुमई तन्मय अडिपड़याकुंड, वार्वु अमेखिन्नरदे इदु वंदे ओर आइडियल स्टेट इदे नोकितान मनिदनोड़े परिणामवलच्छील, मनिदन पायनित्तुकुंड रुकिन्नर इंगे पातो अब्दिना, एल्ला तनिमनिदरगलुम, मत्र अवर्गलकाह वार्गिन्नर इंगे ओवर तनिमनिद वार्गेम इरुद्दालुम कोड अवय ओवर तनिपट्ट अमयपुम, मत्र अमयपुकलय तन्नुल कोंडु वार्गिन्नर ओन्रुम, तनितनियाह वार्गवदिल्ल ओन्रय मत्र ओन्र, तन्नुल इर्तिकुंडाद वार्गिन्नर इंगे अंद निले इल, एप्पडी एवार इंदा, अमयपु कानपडिहिन्नरदे इन्नराल अंग वंदे, इंदा तनिपट्ट जीवनगलाल, जीवनगलाह इल्लामल ओरे उनरुल्ल जीवन, वन कॉन्शस बीइंग, सत वन कॉन्शस बीइंग इन मैनी सोल्स, अव्वार कानपडिहिन्नरदे अदेपोल, इंगे सच्चिदानंदावी नम्सन निले इल्ला, मुजमयाह ओरुमयान निले इल कानपडिहिन्नर इंदा नान्गावधि निले इल अदनोड़े अडिपड़े आम्समान इंदा सत, बीइंग, अदु वंदे, ओन्राह इरक्किन्नरदे अदेपोल, अंद चित, पावर ऑफ़ कॉन्शसनेस अदुम ओरे सत्या, ओरे चित्ताह कानपडिहिन्नरदे अदेपोल, अंद चित्सक्ती, अदुम वन जॉय ऑफ़ फोर्स, वर्किंग इन मैनी लाइफ्स वन पावर ऑफ़ कॉन्शसनेस इन मैनी माइंस, एंड वन जॉय ऑफ़ फोर्स वर्किंग इन मैनी लाइफ्स अडितद आनंद एस्पेक्ट आनंद एस्पेक्ट एब्दिरुक अब्दिना, वन डिलाइट फुल्फिलिंग इट्सेल्फ इन मैनी हॉर्ट्स एंड बॉडी ओरे आनंदम, अनैत्त, तनिपट्ट अमयपुकल, तनिपट्ट उडल्ल अवेहले तर्जुविया, तर्जुवियादाह अमेखिन्नरदे सच्चिदानंदावीन पूरणमान निले, इंद नान्गन, इंद नान्गावधि निले इल पाकरो मुदल निले अनैत्त, अनैत्तिम तांडीयन ओरुमयान सच्चिदानंदा निले, फर्स्ट स्टेट इरण्डावधि निले, अंग वंदे कॉन्शसनेस फोर्स, अंग वंदे रण्डु उन्नाह इरक्किन्नरदे इरण्डावधि निले, मटीरियल, सदन निले, अंद सदन निले इल वेरुम उनरु निले वेरुम, अडिमट्टन निले इल अमिर्द निले इल कानपडिहिन्नरदे सक्तीदान मेलोंगी कानपडिहिन्नर, इरण्डावधि निले मून्रावधि मनम वार्वु सार्न्द निले इंग एल्लामय, प्रिवुपट्टन निले इल कानपडिहिन्नरदे, कॉन्शसनेस एंड फोर्स इदु नाम वार्वु, वार्वय कोरित्त निले, नान्गावधि निले वंदे, अधिमानसन निले, सुप्रमेंटल लाइफ इंग इंदा कॉन्शसनेस इंदा फोर्सम, बेवेराह इरुद्दालुम कोड, रण्डु ओरे निले इल सैल्बडिहिन्नर इदु दान वंदे सुप्रमेंटल लाइफ ओढ़िय अंद अमयपु इंग वंदे, वन इन मैनी, मैनी इन वन नम्म एर्कनविन इंदा करत्ता पात्तिरको, सुपर माइंड नोड़े, इंदा मून्रावधि, पॉइस ऑफ़ कॉन्शसनेस अंग वंदे, इंदा प्रज्ञाना इन्नर कोरपडिहिन्नर, इंदा अप्रेहिंग कॉन्शसनेस कॉन्शसनेस, इंग कानपडिहिन्नरदे इंग वंदे पातो अब्दिना, ओन्रुम इरक्किन्नरदे, पलवुम इरक्किन्नरदे, आना, ओन्र कोन्रिकुल पल अडंगिउल्लदे अंद अंद, तनितनियाह इरुद्दालुम, अवय अदरक्क पिन्नाल अंद वन्नस इरक्किन्नरदे इदु दान, सुप्रमेंटल लेवल रुक्क कोड़िय, अंद ओर उन्नदमान निले, अदे नोकितान मनिदनोड़े परिणामवलच्छील मनिदन पायनित्तुकुंड रुकिन्नर अडितद वंदे भगवानिंगम कोरिपड़वदे, इंदा इंदा मेयरकुंड द करत्ते वंदे, सत्र, अदनोड़े करत अदनोड़े करत्तील, अदनोड़े आम्सत्ते तिरिवाह विलक्किहिन्नर इंदा मुदल निले पातो अब्दिना, अदु वंदे कॉन्शसनेस ऑफ़ सच्चिदानंदा सच्चिदानंदावीन कॉन्शसनेस, अदि कोरित्त निले दान अंद निले अदलिरुद्दे दान मेल्ला मेल्ल, अंद उनरु निले इम, सक्तीयम, मेल्ला मेल्ल, परिणामवलच्छील इंदा प्रबंजत्त्रकुल ईडुपट्ट, मेल्ला मेल्ल वालरिहिन्नरदे इदु, इरण्डावधि निले वंदे, इंदा मटीरियल नेचर मटीरियल नेचरले पातो अब्दिना, मुदल निले इल मुरुवधमाह सच्चिदानंदावीन ओरुमयान निले इरण्डावधि निले इल सच्चिदानंदा वंदे, इंद उलखत्तील, प्रबंजत्तील तन्नै वेलिप्पडत्ति कुल्लुम्बोरुदे मुत्रमा, मुत्रिलमाह तन्नै मारित्त कोलिहिन्नर इदु दान भगवान वंदे, द ग्रेट डिनायल ऑफ़ सच्चिदानंदा बाय हिमसेल्फ, इन्नर भगवान इदे विवरिकिन्नर इंद अड़तल दान वंदे टोटलाव वंदे, द कॉन्शसनेस वंदे, द फोर्स वंदे प्रिवुपट्टन निले इल कानपडिहिन्नरदे, इंग इंदा इनकॉन्शेंट, उनर्वट्र निले अदु दान वंदे, अनैत्तिम वज़्नडत्तुम ओर विदियाह अमेखिन्नरदे आनाल, भगवानिंगम ओर करत्ते कोरिपडिहिन्नर अदु वंदे, इनकॉन्शेंट्स इरुद्दा, इनकॉन्शेंट्स उनर्वट्र निलाह इरुद्दालुम कोड अदु वंदे, ओर अडिपड़ेले पातो अब्दिना, इंस्टिंक्टिवाह अपातो अब्दिना ओर वज़्नडत्तुम सक्तियाह अदु अमेखिन्नरदे, इन्नर करत्ते भगवान इंग कोरिपडिहिन्नर इंग, इन्नोर करत्ते भगवान कोरिपड़वदुपोन, अल्ल गोड़ केल्वे एरुंददे The spacious miracle of the all governing and infallible unconscious which is only the mask but which modern knowledge has mistaken for the real face of the cosmic deity इदरको वंदा अरल्लमोड़ि कोड विलक्कम केटारगल, एन्न अर्थम अब्दिना, द कॉस्मिक देती एन्न अर्थम अदक, मॉड, इंदा इनकॉन्शेंट्स एप्पडी इंदा मॉडर्न नॉलेज हैस मिस्टेकन फॉर द रियल फेस ऑफ़ द कॉस्मिक देती इदुक अर्थम एन्न नुकेटान अदके विलक्कम एन्न अब्दिना, द मॉडर्न नॉलेज अब्दिंगरदे, मॉडर्न साइंटिफिक मटीरियलिज्म इदु दान मॉडर्न नॉलेज इन्नर भगवान कोरिपड़वदे अवुल्ल पोर्तोरिक्यो एदु अब्दिना, एल्लामय मैटर मैटर दान कड़बुल अवुल्लक एप्पडी वंदे, मनिदनकुंड ओर आन्मिहवादिगलकुंड, कड़बुल अब्दिंगरदे, एल्लात्यम कडंद निले इरक्किन्नरदो द मटीरियलिस्टिकुंड अदक अपोजिट स्टेट, अवुन पोर्तोरिक्यो मैटर दान, द बी ऑल एंड द एंड ऑल कड़बुल अवुन पोर्तोरिक्यो अदु दान, अदे कोरिक्य महायल दान इंग सोलर भगवानिंगम कोरिपडिहिन्नर, ओर पोएटिक का अंद वार्तय भगवान इंदा सेंटेंसले सोलर Modern knowledge has mistaken for the real face of the cosmic deity जड़त्त पोरलीय, अव एल्लामुमाह मटीरियलिस्ट निन्निकिन्नर, अदे तांडी अवन सेल्वद इल्ल अदे कोरिक्य मन्नमाह तान इंदा भगवान इंदा, वाक्यत योव्यह पड़त्ति उल्लार इदु वंदे, इरण्डावधि निले मून्रावधि निले पट्टर भगवान विलक्कुम्बोरुदे, अदु दान वंदे स्टेटस ऑफ़ माइंड एंड लाइफ लाइफ वंदे, अंद उनर्वट्र निले इरुद्दे सच्चिदानंदावीन एदर निलेहल आह इरक्ककोड़िय, इंद उनर्वट्र निले इरुद्दे मेल्ला मेल्ला तन्नै वेलिप्पडत्ति कोलिहिन्नरदे इंग दान मनिदनोड़े वार्वु अमेखिन्नरदे, इदनाल दान इंग दान अंद मनिदनोड़े वार्वुला अवन प्रश्नेगले समाल समालिक्य, एदर होलिकिन्नर सवालकले एदर होलिकिन्नर सवालकले वंदे, अवनाल वंदे इंद सवालकलक्क अडि पनिवदन मूलमाह, इंद सवालकल निर्वड़ुवदे इल्ल अदे समयतल, सवालकलयम अवनाल, ओर वेत्रिकरमाह अवनाल कैयालमुडिवदिल्ले इन्नर करत्ते भगवान कोरिपडिहिन्नर एनिन्नराल, मनिदन नन्न भगवान वंदे, ओर मुजमयान ओर उनरु निले अडैंद, ओर अमयपाह कानपड़ुवद इल्ल, ही इस, ही इस हाफ पोटेंट कॉन्श, ही इस हाफ पोटेंट कॉन्शेंट बीइंग अब्दिंगर भगवान एना अवुनोड़े अडिपड़ेले एदलिरुद्दे वरिहिन्डान इन्नराल, द इनकॉन्शेंट्स ऑफ़ मैटर अदलिरुद्दान वरिहिन्नर आनाल, आरयहोरय उनरु, सक्तीय उड़िय ओर उनरु निले आह, इंद ओर जीवनाह अवुन मनिदन कानपडिहिन्नर इंद अधिमानसन निले, नान्गावधि निले इल एल्लामय वंदे ओर निरेवेट्रपट्टन निले इल कानपडिहिन्नर Here there is a fulfilled existence, इदु नान्गावधि निले अदे नोकितान मनिदनोड़े परिणामवलच्छी पायनिकिन्नरदे इंग वंदे, नम्म वार्विल संदिक्क कोड़िय, एन्न कारणत्तिनाल, नम्म वार्विल प्रश्नेगले इरुन्नो पो संदिक्रो इंग वंदे, इंदा पार्शियल अफर्मेशन ऑफ़ लाइफ इन्नर भगवान कोरिपडिहिन्नर पार्शियल अफर्मेशन ऑफ़ लाइफ अब्दिना सच्चिदानंदावी नाम मुजमयाह उनरविल्ल, आरयहोरयाह नाम इंग उनरिहिन्नर अदिलाल, एदर होल्वदुदा नाम वार्विल संदिक्क कोड़िय सवालकल इदा अनैत्तिमय, इंद अधिमानसन निले इल पूरणमाह निरेवेट्रपडिहिन्नर, इंग भगवान कोरिपडिहिन्नर इंदा इंदा, नान्गावधि निले इल, अधिमानसन निले इल There is a complete affirmation of all that is hidden behind in the course of evolution in this fourth relation इंग वंदे, सच्चिदानंदावीन अनैत्त आम्संगलुमय मुजमयाह उर्दी सैयपडिहिन्नर, इन्नर भगवान कोरिपडिहिन्नर अंद निले इल दान वंदे, वार्विनोड़े अनैत्त सवालकलुम, अदरकनत्तीरुम मनिदन अड़ेहिन्नर इदु वंदे, आइडियल स्टेट, इदे नोकितान मनिदन परिणामवलच्छील सेलिकिन्नर तर्पोदु मनिदन वार्वु निले वंदे, ओर पार्शियल लाइफ ओर आरयहोरयान, मुरुवधमान ओर निरेवेट्रपड़ाद मुजमय अड़ेयाद वार्गेदान मनिदन वार्गिन्नर इंद नान्गावधि निले इल दान मनिदन वंदे ओर रियल मनिदन, ओर मुजमयाह, मुजमयान मनिदनाह अंद नान्गावधि नरयान सुपरम, सुपर माइंड अदिल दान मनिदन इंदा मुजमयान निले इय एट्टिहिन्नर इंद भगवान वंदे ओर सिंधिक्के वेंडी ओर करत्ते कोरिकिन्नर, एन्न कोरिकिन्नर इन्नराल There is perfect knowledge and guidance in the so-called unconsciousness अब्दिंगर नम्म एदे इनकॉन्शेंट नन्सित्रक्रमो, अदलिरुद्दे ओर गाइडेंस कडेक्कुदा अब्दिंगर That is a real life of real man towards which this partial life and partial unfulfilled manhood is striving forward with the perfect knowledge and guidance in the so-called unconsciousness अब्दिंगर इद एन्न अब्दिना, एदु नम्म इनकॉन्शेंट नन्सित्रक्रमो, अदलिरुद्दे परफेक्ट गाइडेंस वो नॉलेज नम्मलक्क कडेक्कुद, नम्मल अरियाम, अदि दान अदु दान नम्मल वज़्नडत्ति सेलिकिन्नरदे आनाल, नम्मलोड़े कॉन्शेंट पार्ट्स, उनरुल्ल निले इल कडेक्ककोड़िय अव एल्लामय, एप्पोल्दाव द अरिदाह कडेक्ककोड़िय, ओर ओलिकीट्रकलाह तान अवय अमेखिन्नर अब्दिंगर अदलाल ओर रेवेलेशन आरुकिन्नरदे, ओर इंस्पिरेशन, एप्पोल्दाव द तोन्रकोड़िय The revelation and inspiration are received only in flashes एप्पयाव दान वर, वरकोड़िय, एप्पडी ओर ओर कविंगनक्क कोरिकिन्नरदो ओर प्रॉफेट कोरिकिन्नरदो, ओर ज्ञानिक्क कोरिकिन्नरदो ओर मिस्टिक्क कोरिकिन्नरदो, ओर थिंकर, ओर सिंधनावादिक्क कोरिकिन्नरदो इल्ल ओर अरिवज्जिविगलक्क कोरिकिन्नरदो, इवे एल्लामय वंदे कॉन्शेंट लेवल दान वरिहिन्नरदे, आनाल, अवय एप्पयाव द कडेक्ककोड़िय, ओर ओलिकीट्रकल अवेहलाह तान कडेकिन्नर, वरिहिन्नर एदु मनिदनोड़े परिणामवलच्छील, अवने वज़्नडत्ति सेलिकिन्नरदे इन्नराल अवनुल इरक्किन्नर इनकॉन्शेंट, एना इनकॉन्शेंट इन्नर भगवानिंगम कैप्टल लेटर्सले सोलर That means अंद इनकॉन्शेंट्क के पिन्नाल, एदु तन्नी मारित्त कुंड रुकिन्नरदे इन्नराल, सच्चिदानंदा अदु दान मेल्ला मेल्ला मनिदने परिणामवलच्छी मेल नोकियारित्त सैल्किन्नर इदु वरिकेदा नम्म पोन सेशनले पातो नम्म इंद सेशनले पैरग्राफ सेवन इल एंड आरम्भिक्लान नम्म मैडम पढिकरान नुन निकर
Thank you sir, thank you From the data we have now before us we can see that the difficulties which arise from the imperfect points of consciousness and force in man in his present status of mind and life are principally three first, he is aware only of a small part of his own being his surface mentality, his surface life, his surface physical being is all that he knows and he does not know even all of that below is the occult stage, occult search of his subconscious and his subliminal mind his subconscious and his subliminal life impulses, his subconscious corporeality all that large part of himself which he does not know and cannot govern but which rather knows and governs him all existence and consciousness and force being one we can only have some real power over so much of our existence as we are identified with by self-awareness the rest must be governed by its own consciousness which is subliminal to our surface surface mind and life and body and yet the two being one movement and not two separate movements the larger and more potent part of ourselves must govern and determine in the mass the smaller and less powerful therefore we are governed by the subconscious and subliminal even in our conscious existence and in our very self-mastery and self-direction we are only instruments of what seems to us the unconscious within us
Thank you madam, thank you, thank you Explanation उल्लप्पोल नम्म
Sir, पढिकरानगीन सर
पढिंग मैडम please, welcome
There is imperfect points of consciousness and force in man in his present status of mind and life therefore there are principally three difficulties that arise in man first, man is only aware of a small part of himself he is aware of only his surface life, surface mentality and his surface physical part in fact, he does not know even all of that below his surface self, there is an occult power, powerful upward movement of his subconscious and subliminal mind his subconscious and sublim, subliminal his subconscious and subliminal life impulses, his subconscious bodily functions. These constitute a large part of himself which he does not know and cannot govern. Rather, this subliminal and subconscious part knows him and governs him. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, madam. Thank you. This is a wonderful God question. This is a... We must think. It is a very beautiful... Thinking... So, the paragraph we saw, what did we see? Consciousness and force. Chit, chit, shakti. This is what makes the human alive. Consciousness is... When you are in a good mood, the force is there, and the life is there. Consciousness is completely dominant. Consciousness is very loud. This is what makes the human alive. That is what makes the life alive. This is what we saw. In a perfect one level, consciousness and force, chit, shakti, chit and chit, shakti. Are alive. We saw the life. Life is the light of the shakti. This is the truth. This is what we see. God has said. What God says? The life is the light of the shakti. Consciousness, force, is what we see. How do we see? Divided status. The life is divided. What is happening? There is no full. We do not see the consciousness in one level. If we see in a divided level, here are three difficulties. Three problems are solved. The first problem is... Our ignorance. Ignorance is... We must understand. Our ignorance. We saw that. Ninety-nine percent are our ignorance. Ninety-nine percent, what does God say? That is what we have in our mind. Subliminal part, subconsciously, subliminal part. It is inside our mind. That is why we do not have knowledge. Because, we have a part of the mind. His awareness is everywhere. His mind is everywhere. His mind is everywhere. Our mind is not clear. Our mind is not clear. Our mind is not clear. It is not clear. That is what God says. However, we are aware of it. Even if we are aware of it, there is no full. However, the surface self of the mind, we see. God says, there is an occult powerful upward movement of his subconscious and subliminal mind. A... 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 Is there? Where is it? It is inside our subconscious and subliminal mind. It is inside our mind. Not only that. Our subconscious and subliminal life impulses. The ones that are alive. It is inside our mind. It is inside our mind. Not only that. Our bodily functions. We see that it is happening in our mind. However, the bodies are alive. This is what makes the human alive. This is what makes the human alive. Not only that. This is what makes the human alive. In the subconscious and subliminal parts of mind, body and life. This is what is happening. This is what we do not know. He does not know. He cannot govern. However, what is... What is not known? Those subliminal subconscious parts. That is what is happening. However, we must think. We say that it is alive. However, it is alive. Our ignorance is not enough. That is what God says. This is because the consciousness and force are seen. This is the first problem. You are not aware of it. This is the first problem. Next, explanation.
Sir, please.
Please, madam.
Existence and consciousness and force are one. We can have real power over so much of our existence as we can identify with it by our self-awareness. The more we are conscious of it, the more control we can have. That part of our existence we are not conscious of must be governed by its own consciousness, which are subliminal to our surface body, mind and life. Our surface unconscious selves are not separate existence but parts of one movement. The larger and more powerful part of ourselves must govern and determine the smaller and less powerful parts. Therefore, we are governed by the subconscious and subliminal even in our conscious existence. Man has occurred some self-mastery and self-direction only as instruments of what seems unconscious within us. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, madam. Thank you. In the existence and consciousness and force are one. So, we see the... The... Sat, chit and... Sat, chit and Ananda. Chit is... Shakti is God. Chit, shakti, both are God. That is why the... Sat and chit, shakti, are all. This is what God says. We see all the things. We see them for our sake. She is... She is not in a different world. She is a triune existence. In the consciousness... How? At some point, we have a life. We have a life. At some point, we have a self-awareness. At that point, we can have it. Now, our awareness is... It is somewhat there. At that point, we can have it. We have control. A lot of it is there. Our whole life is... We can have it. That is what God says. Our existence. In our existence, at what point do we have awareness? We saw in the paragraph. Our existence is somewhat there. Majority of our existence is subconscious, subliminal. The mind is the mind. That is what God says. We can have real power over so much of our existence as we can identify with it by our self-awareness. We have a part of our own. If we have awareness, at that point, we can have it. That is what God says. The more we are conscious of it, the more control we can have. That is true. Now, whether we have consciousness or awareness, these parts, how they are... How they are... How they are... We see them. Subliminal to our surface body, mind and life. Why? Our mind is the mind. Majority of our parts are not conscious. If we have awareness or consciousness, they are what we see. Subconscious are subliminal. The ones that are alive. If we are conscious, we see the surface consciousness. If we are in one level, we can have it. They are what we see. Subconscious, subliminal, in these parts. Now, our mind, our life, are all the same. That is what God says. None are different. Our mind, our mind, our life. We cannot compare them. They are all the same. Therefore, we see... This is the larger and more powerful part of ourselves. This is a... The larger and more powerful part is... The... They are what makes the human alive. Therefore, what God says? The larger and more powerful part of ourselves must govern and determine the smaller and less powerful parts. Larger and more powerful parts of ourselves. This is what we see. They are what we see. The smaller and less powerful parts are the surface parts. Our mind. They are what we see. Why? Therefore, what God says? Even if we are conscious, we are conscious. However, we are not aware of the parts of the human. The... These are the two. Subconscious and subliminal. Subliminal is vast area. Subconscious is just the mind. Subliminal is... They are what make the human alive. Therefore, man has acquired some self-mastery and self-direction. What is self-mastery? You are alive. You are alive. We will take it. All of this is what God says. This self-mastery and self-direction. You are alive. You are alive. This is what makes the human alive. Why is it alive? He is unconscious. That is what makes the human alive. Therefore, this is a very important God question. That is why I... 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 Be conscious. Because, we are conscious. We are conscious. Be conscious is... Our conscious level of consciousness. We must be conscious. Whether we are conscious, we will be alive. We will be alive. Be conscious. Why? This is what God says. This is why the majority of our minds are alive. Our lives are alive. Therefore, we are conscious. At that point, we will be alive. That is what God says.
That is what God says. Sometimes, we see dreams. Or visions. We see our dreams. However, it is... It is... We are... The dream is very difficult. Many, many dreams. So, we see dreams. We see dreams. We see dreams. We see dreams.
Thank you, madam. You are very correct. Why? The intuition is... Intuition is in our subliminal and subconscious parts. In fact, Einstein's theory of relativity. His intuition is... Of course, later on, he proved it. Similarly, our god, Ramana Jam. He got two thousand mathematical formulas. All of them were intuitive. He got one. He was sponsored by a hardy English mathematician. He said, prove it. Ramana said, this is true. However, I do not know how to prove it. However, this is true. He got mathematical formulas. However, now, he has done a lot of mathematical formulas. How? He is alive. Einstein is alive. On the intuitive level, their subconscious and subliminal parts are... The... Revelations are all. That is why you are very correct. Dreams are all. That is what makes the world alive.
Unna unna Adhe pola oru sonna allar namagiri thayar ondu Enakondu podukara abhina na soraka so He completely andha divine da ondu annamaru valapannirka abhindradhu adhiyavara solvar sir Adhiyavara
Kandipa Hmm kandipa kandipa
Thank you sir
Mama the in the rendu point one ondu The larger and more potent part of ourself must govern and determine In the mass the smaller and less powerful So adhalala enna when he says we are governed by subconscious And subliminal I'm I'm reading it as a you know more and more our life is being governed by our matter You know byla you know like you know pasikidusapadro Andhamaari is instead of conscious Ah is not governing us completely Ah we are living in a lower Level of consciousness Abhindramari I am interpreting this paragraph Liya
Ah Adhavada hmm Pinnadi in the renno rendu mon paragraph Ah kalichu bahavan soligindra engga namalku solution namalku patho So nengi sorudhu correct If assuming that Ah nambo ondu subliminal subconscious Namrodya Ah manidhanodya unaruvanilaykku ullarukkakoodiya andha they are all part of the unconscious abhina bahavan Liya Hmm Adhanala aalapadigindro abhina Pressure in the solution engga kadikampanna Ipo ipani nengi sorudhu correct Correct this is true That means where to find a solution
To make the matter more conscious
Ille ille engga endhatalathara solution kadikam ipo ipo
Of course the supermind and the
Ah adhitana bahavan nengi soraradu adha pinnadi varu paragraph la soraradu
Adhi pinnadi varu paragraph la soraradu but indhadathla We are governed by subconscious
Amma
And hence our level of existence is lower we have not we need to work on us to Elevate the consciousness of our matter Every ah so that It has a whole body and our mind Is lives in an elevated more conscious level Instead of being governed by the matter
Adhavada matter nu sollakoodadhu nambo ondu level of consciousness ondu More of more ah more and more oriented towards unconscious Apri than namayiduthro adhavada matter nu nambo moorika solamay matter matter leveli irukkudu Anaa manishan ondhe life and mind ondhaparuk konja matter lendu veliyavandharan liya Life and mind la patho abhina We are oru oru to certain extent we are away from the material consciousness Konja valachadhanarayla vandharan Vandhal kodha still avanodya consciousness ondu oru full levelkku velipadala Still avanodya larger part edu abhina andha adi unaruvatalam subconscious and subliminal parts da avanodya life ondu lead pannudhu
Hmm
The anaa solution enggerukka Conscious partla da solution oru manidhanukka kadikamudiyam Adhanala da bahavan enna soligindra idu ondu idai patta nelay Supermental levella pona paro ma the man ondu he'd be fully conscious anga Anga ondu avanodya life ondu fully conscious arukku The solution kaintha life la avam face pantra andha savalgalukkela anga ondu fulla ondu oru Teeruvu kadikkam abhina Ipo ondu areyavaryana nelayaladha narukkara manidhan vaajikindra liya adhitana bahavan aaramathre soraradu Adhavada bahavan nadhi enna soraradu abhina aaramathre enna soraradu abhina There is an imperfect voice of consciousness and force in man abhina Imperfect voice of force and consciousness enna arta Consciousnessum forceum ebdi irukkono Perfecta irukkono abhina onna onnas da adharunadhi adipadayamsam See epurudhume nambo ondu life divine na la purunjukono abhina Yeah life divine la varu ellaa ah questionsko answer edhala irukka abhina sachidananda ala answer irukku Ena sachidananda pathi bahavan kuripidama Oru paragraph kodha life divine la nambo padikamudiyadhu Sachidananda ala la consciousness and force ebdi irukkudu rendu me ondu uniteda arukku One two in onea arukku avladha anga ondu Consciousness vara force indradhu kadiyadhu consciousness is force Force is consciousness
Hmm
Anaa manishan kitta varunpo enna iduchu Rendu divide iduchinga adhanada bahavan nengi soraradu there is an imperfect conscious Voice of consciousness and force in man abhina Adhavonda prai parukram manam warvusarundanayle Adhanala da ondu Andha consciousness ondu imperfecta arukradhanala avan ondu oru kurukey alavudha avanukondu consciousness levelirukku Majority of avanodya consciousness ondu adi unaruvatalathila irukku subconscious and subliminal levelirukkindradhu Adhanala da avanodya life la onda avanala ondu proper lifeu lead panamudiyala abhina So he has to go beyond that Beyond that appavondhu moorumayana de parukram oru Ipo irukramayah the subconscious subliminal parts Andha bahangal onda avanay varinadathuvadhu arukku badhara Moomayana oru full consciousness la avanodya vaalkay naanadakkum Adhavonda epa nadakkum abhina Only when it becomes more and more consciousness conscious And identified as supermental consciousness Adhitana adhi noke than namelamay praya pa Payanathukondi irukindro Anaa manidharagalele pathkala manidharagalele ipa manishanakarukranelay Yariyari la consciousness la uyernelayilirukindraragalo neetshyamaha avanodya warvavondhu Andha quality of life patho abhina neetshyamaha andha consciousness ondu keeraarukka life lendu adhu maribatta than kaanapadu Adhuka manidharagallita ondu Veerbadi lensolemudiyadhu neetshyama the more you are conscious The more control you will have your on your life adhitana anayi bahavan anayi mother mother soraranga tirupidirupi soraranga Be conscious be conscious and mother sorudhake oray karanada idhay karanada
Understood yeah
Adhuta paragraph eight
Okay Paragraph eight This is what the old wisdom men When it said that Man imagines himself to be the doer of the work by his free will But in reality Nature determines all his works And even the wise are compelled to follow their own nature But since nature is the creative force of consciousness Of the being within us Who is masked By his own inverse movement and Apparent denial of himself They called that inverse Creative movement of his consciousness The Maya or illusion power of the Lord And said that All existences are turned as upon a machine through his Maya By the Lord seated within the heart of all existences It is evident then that Only by man so far exceeding mind As to become one In self-awareness With the Lord can be become master of his own being And since this is not possible In the inconscience or in the subconscious itself Since profit cannot come by plunging down into our depths back down back Towards the inconscient It can only be by going inward Where the Lord is seated and by ascending into that Which is still super conscientious Into the supermind that This unity can be wholly established Or there in the higher and divine Maya Is the conscious knowledge In its law and truth Of that which works in the subconscious by the lower Maya Under the conditions of that denial which seeks to become The affirmation For this lower nature Exert what is build and known in that higher nature The illusion power of the divine knowledge In the world which creates appearances Is governed by the true power of the same knowledge which knows the truth Behind the appearances And keeps ready for us The affirmation towards which they are working The partial And apparent man here Will find that The perfect and real man capable of an entirely self over being By his full unity with that self-existent Who is the omniscient Lord of his own cosmic evolution and procession Thank you
Thank you madam thank you very much thank you Explanation putting air out there Ah padigmad
Man imagines That he is the doer of his work by his free will But in reality It is the nature that determines all his work Nature is the creative force of consciousness of the being within us He is masked by the inverse movement of sachidananda himself There is apparent denial of sachidananda himself The old wisdom calls that inverse creative moment the Maya or illusion power of the Lord They said that all existence are turned as upon a machine Through his Maya by the Lord seated within the heart of all existences Thank you sir
I think nengi ondu the pona vara nakudutha notesland padchigindranikiran Ah latest answer la oru chinnan addition panirukkara adhena abhina Hmm The second sentence la he is masked by the inverse movement Ah la bracket la oru ah koncha adukore expand panirukkara inverse movement abhina consciousness Becoming unconscious Adhada ondu inverse movement abhina Of sachidananda himself adhavonna Adhe pola second artha sentence la there is apparent denial of sachidananda himself Adhulik bracket la as evil pain and suffering found in the world Idhuonna Adhe pola last sentence la they said that all existence are turned upon as upon a machine Through his Maya by the Lord seated within the heart of all existences this last sentence Ah la bracket la ondu enakuduthukamna Sri orabindho refers here the Gita Bhavat Gita le varakoodiya oru Ah true oru unmayi than bahavan nengi nengi quote pantra nengi Ah indha chinnan oru addition The latest neti kanchala pona vara amcha la idhri illa indhvara amcha la idhri add panikuduthirukkara adhul Vandhirukkala Manidhan ondu Manidhan nambo enna nanchitukkona abhina Naam ondu ellame ellame ondu namrodya the free will Sudandaramaha namrodya sangalpam enna nannikindrumo Adhan padiyae sailpadigindrom naansmedhum sudandaramanavan I am an independent abhina nanchitukkarama oorum manidhanavara than nannikindra Anaal edu unma enna indral Yerkay nature abhina bahavan nengi capital la soraradu The capital la abhina bahavan sollakoodiya andha universal nature Adhitana nengi bahavan nengi kuripidigindra Nature indra bahavan kuripidigindradhu Universal nature Human naturekum meelarukkakoodiya andha ah universal nature Adhada ondu manidhanodya veelye teermaanikindradhu Enandral the nature abhina Adhavonda oru creative force of consciousness conscious consciousness of the being Adhavonda oru aakkapooramana oru unaruvanilayin sailvaadu Adhhey eppadi thannay marithukondulladhu indral The nature ondu eppadi marichikthi thannay marithukondulladhu indral Sachidanandaavin edhernelayana oru yeekamaha thannay marithukondulladhu indha olagathala Sachidanandaavin sailvaadu ellamay edhun edhuvadharunadhi adipadayamsangal ondu The unity infinity bliss Idhelan da sachidananda avanodya adipadayamsangal Anaa adharunadhi edhurnelaygal da onavapakro edhurnelaygal edhupakro division pakro Evil and suffering pakro death pakro Finite levella oru varambakkulla sailvaadu idhallamay sachidanandaavin odhi edhurnelaygal Yerkay ondu thannay andha sachidanandaavin odhi edhurnelaygalana andha yeekathit thannay marithukondulladhu He is masked by the inverse movement of sachidananda himself Adhanala ondu The edu warvin andha irmehalirukindranla Thunbam Vali suffering idhallamay nambar warvilasandikro Idhallamay ondu Sachidanandaavin sachidananda thannaitana Tha martthakkulum orame oru sailvaadugal Apparent denial of sachidananda himself Yen sachidananda ondu thannay Veenduminrayavara thannay edhurnelaygalii thannay marithukolikidradhu indha prabanchathala sailbadumorudhu Thannay thannodya edhurnelaygalana Amshangalai thannay marithukolikindradhu Adhada ondu yerkayin sailvaadaha engge kaanapadigindradhu Idhavonda namrodya pandaya ah the Old wisdom The pandaya Ah aanmisha riddiyana Ah Amipugal ondu Idhay evaar adhithana indral Idhavonda maya Illa illusion illusion power of the Lord Indra adhithana Anga adhit enna anga bahavan ondu nengi ndha geetayilindha reference kodukrar bahavan aaramathre lendu kodukappata reference Adhanodya oru vilakamaha than nengi kuripidigindra Nengi ennakuripidigindranindral Undhvaarvila pathakkodi ellay eekangalame eppadi sailbadigindranindral Oru yenthara gadiila oru yentharathin meela vachav surulam oru bommai bolada adhu Aattu vikka padigindran Edhaya edhaya eva edu ondu adhay aattu vikkindranindral Oovor amipukkulum irukkindra andha purusha the Lord Adhada ondu oovor amipiyam Thannay velipurathil Oru yentharathil surulam bommai ponnru Avahilay aattu vikkindran Idhu ondu oru mayin vili sailvaadaha idhu kaanapadigindradhu Indra bahavan indha Ah indha adharunadhi artam idhu da ivaaraha kuripidigindra Anaa idharunadhi vilakam ondu idhu idhu ondu Ah evaar idhu ondu Idhukidhavadiya real interpretation enna abhina bahavan indha adhuta portionla vilakkinradu adhukulla polla namba
Indha keera varra varikala ondu Under the conditions of the denial capital d koduthirukarsar so It is the denial of the divine
Denial of sachidananda denial of divine 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 na divin
Hmm Adhengi terirdhu ondu how he masked himself in all this pain and suffering and all these things He himself come out like that Hmm But
Amma
Hmm thank you
Adhala nammasavathri la kodha pathirukon the cosmic player laughs within his mask abhina kodha bahavan ondu Savathriilam kodupiduvar Indha indukuritha varikal ondu Oh Otthavari galan nariya savathriila namba pathkala namba
Hmm
Niavakathukvarla nariya pathirkum
La the adoration of the divine madhala na ipan nengi sonnada varudhada
Ah
Nengi da ondu ah ondu aswapati manara keekarada Anga ertha vilakittu ni pakleya olagatha pakleya olagathala vana pakleya abhina sullitaru
Ah Correct
Ni pathkala hmm thank you
Adhuta explanationulla polla namba
Padikitumasa
Padigmadam please
In that case How can man become master of his movements From being a slave of his nature For that Man has to exceed his mind He has to become one in self-awareness With the Lord seated within This is not possible in the inconscience Or in the subconscious itself Because nothing beneficial can come about by Plunging back towards the unconscious The unity with the Lord can be established Only by going within us Or by ascending towards The supermind which is super conscientious to us In supermind There is higher or divine Maya In divine Maya In its law and truth There is conscious knowledge of that of that works in the subconscious What works in the subconscious is by the lawyer Maya In lawyer Maya There are conditions of the
The Maya Shakti you have seen, Maya Shakti is the original of the Thotra Ayam, that is why it is called Divine Knowledge. What creates this false appearance is the illusion power of the Divine Knowledge. That is a Shakti, Maya Shakti, Maya is, we have seen it. The Maya is the real meaning, what is it? Infinite, a finite level, a Shakti, that is Maya. We have seen it, Maya is a wrong interpretation. Later on, some other amicups, they give us a wrong connotation. But what is said by Allah, Maya is, what is the reality of the Maya? The Iray Shakti, when the world is revealed, it is a memory of the death. That Shakti is, that Iray Shakti is Maya, that is what Allah is saying to you. The same is what Allah is saying to you. The illusion power of the Divine Knowledge. That is what the world has created, the foolishness of the foolishness of us. But this illusion power, this lower Maya, illusion power, is not only running, making progress, the truth consciousness of the same knowledge. We have seen it, the truth consciousness, higher Maya, divine Maya, we have seen it. Because the world is, what is the light of the Buddha? This is the truth of Allah. The world is, it is the light of the Buddha. If you see the world, because the Buddha is infinite, infinite, endless. In the world, at a finite level, in a narrow path, if you see the world, that is the truth consciousness, super mind. We have seen three ways, that is the light of the world. When you see the light, what is the light of the world? We have seen it, that is the Maya, that illusion power, that Maya Thotran, Maya Shakti, is the light of the Maya. That Maya Shakti is, what is the Thotra Ayam, that is the truth consciousness. That is what Allah is saying to you. The truth consciousness is, the foolishness of the Maya, that is the reason for it. The false appearance is the illusion power of the Divine Knowledge. This illusion power is governed by the truth power of the same knowledge. With that, we know the Buddha. How do we know? If we see the foolishness of the Buddha, then we know the Buddha. Truth consciousness, we know it. And the truth power. Truth power is, what is, we are all ready for it. The Buddha's true affirmation, the Buddha's true affirmations. All of them, the things, the memory, the gossip, the theme, are in this. In this, we are looking at the Buddha's true affirmations. We are looking at the Buddha's true consciousness, the super mind, we are looking at it. In this, in this Buddha, we are all, what is ready for us, that is Divine Grace. We are all ready, ready for us, we are looking at the Buddha's true power, that is the truth power.
Sir.
Aditha paragraph, paragraph nine, polanaba.
Paragraph nine. The second difficulty is that man is separated in his mind, his life, his body from the universal and therefore even as he does not know himself is equally and even more incapable of knowing his fellow creatures. He forms by inferences, theories, observations and a certain imperfect capacity of sympathy, a rough mental construction about them. But this is not knowledge. Knowledge can only come by conscious identity for that is the only true knowledge, existence aware of itself. We know what we are so far as we are consciously aware of ourselves. The rest is hidden. So also we can come really to know that with which we become one in our consciousness but only so far as we can become one with it. If the means of knowledge are indirect and imperfect, the knowledge attained will also be indirect and imperfect. It will enable us to work out with a certain precarious clumsiness but still perfectly enough from our mental standpoint, certain limited practical aims, necessities, conveniences, a certain imperfect and insecure harmony of our relations with that which we know. But only by a conscious unity with it can we arrive at a perfect relation. Therefore, we must arrive at a conscious unity with our fellow beings and not merely at the sympathy created by love or the understanding created by mental knowledge which will always be the knowledge of the superficial existence and therefore imperfect in itself and subject to denial and frustration by the uprush of the unknown and unmastered from the subconscious or the subliminal in them and us. But this conscious oneness can only be established by entering into that in which we are one with them, the universal. And the fullness of the universal exists consistently only in that which is superconscient to us in the supermind. For here in our normal being, the greater part of it is subconscious and therefore in this normal place of mind, life and body, it cannot be possessed. The lower conscious nature is bound down to ego in all its activities, chained triply to the stake of differentiated individuality. The supermind alone commands unity in diversity. Thank you sir.
Thank you madam, thank you. The paragraph allamay, ononamey ondu oru ponnerutukalal porukkeppattavai. Rombaadhu complete and the human relations, manidu uravakal, manidu uravakalna, ipadike appadi amanjirukku, edanaala ondu manidu uravakulila prashanekal varudhu. Ah, adarkondu teeruvu enna abdingathu, indha paragraphilla Bhagwan ondu romba aazhakaayi velakkukinrar. Romba arpudumana oru paragraphudhu, nambu ulap polanaba.
Padikit ma sir.
I'm putting madam please.
The second difficulty is that we live as separate individuals from the universe. We are separated in our body, mind and life from others. Therefore, we neither know ourselves fully nor know our fellow human beings fully. How do we know others? By our inferences, theories, observations and an imperfect capacity of sympathy, we form a rough mental construction about others. But what we know about them is not real knowledge. True knowledge can come only by a conscious identity. Whatever we are consciously aware of ourselves, only that much we know. We do not know the rest. Similarly, if we want really to know something, we must become one with it in our consciousness. This is the direct means of getting knowledge. If we get knowledge through indirect means, that is by our superficial sensory perception, such knowledge will be indirect and imperfect. And such knowledge may be useful for our limited practical necessity and conveniences. It may bring an imperfect and insecure harmony of our relations with that which we know. We can arrive at a perfect relation with others only by a conscious unity. Thank you sir.
Thank you madam, thank you, thank you. First difficulty.
Kondya ornamushan sarayan kara. Indha karuthu ondu namagai ellar manasni ondu than sonna kodumbangala ondu konjam guda ondu unharmonious ondu stagee irkada sir. Very harmoniously we will lead our life. Eppo inga, inga kodumbathukulla, ala tanakulliyae irko. Appo ondu automatica velila, abdaye oru alam madri paravi, elladatli ondu namu poora edangal ellame very harmonious sir, romba armiyana karuthu sir, ninga koduthirkaladu romba aazhakaayi. Thank you sir.
Romba arpudumana, adathu previous ondu first difficulty patao abdina. Abdaye namalode, namalode sindhanaya ondu puduchu ulukramaradha arukkudu. Ala enna sollar, first difficulty enna sollar. Ne onnayae sariyapunjukkalay, onnay edhu, onnay edhu vayinaduthu abdina. Ah, ne etta, ne ariyamalirukkindra, andha majority, andha adima adiunarvathalam, adu da onnay vayinaduthikindra, vaargkaya. Ununade conscious part, vichu siru romba romba konja bachanada ondu kurindha bachanada alavula da ununade vaargkaya vayinaduthu, majority vaargkaya nathuthu. Ne teriyada, onnakka teriyada bahangal da onnay vayinaduthu. So, endhalavuka nambu ariyamaila irukkundro, namalode unmayana namalode moru jeevanay patthiya, oru moru ariyamaila irukkundro, abdingira oru oru sindhanayee ulukramari oru karuthu, first difficulty Bhagwan sollar. Irundavadi difficulty enna sollar abdina. Nambu, namakkonam mattavulukka adip, idayiranu uravu ondu epdi amayinongra daam sollar. Enna, enna kaaranabdina, nambu ondu oru tanipattu oru jeevangalakataan vaarginro. Namakendre oru tanipattam manam, tanipattu udal, tanipattu vaaru. Anaa, idu ondu oru periy ariyami abdingirar Bhagwan, enna kaaranabdina. Namalode manam ondu, the prabhanja manathinode oru angam. Namalode vaaru ondu universal lifeonode oru part. Adhey pole da namalode udaloo, the universal physical, adhanode oru part. But namakka adu teriyathu le. Nambu tanipattam moraila, tanipattu oru amipu, abdingira oru endathalada vaaru. Adanaala, namakka ondu namay suttiirukkaramalapatiyana oru sariyana arivu, oru puridalo namakka irupadu le. Bhagwan enna sollar abdina, namayee namu thirinchukkalay abdingirar. Namayee, namayee nambu sariyapunjukkalay, adhey pole. Nambu, namalode saarundirukkaramalay, suttrulavu nambu sariyapunjukkarudhu le, abdingirar. Nambu epdi punjukuram mattavulakka abdina, nambu oru inference onra patha nambu oru mudiyukvarikindro. Appara, othara patthi oru, namakendre oru theories, ivunga epdi, avunga epdingira oru theories kurvaakindro. Nambu observations, na patha, avungode peechu, nadivadibhavane epdi irundhu, apdi irundhu oru observation pandro. Adhey pole, ah, sila samiyam othangala patha nambu ondu oru sympathy varudhu. Adu ondu pathaona sympathy ondu, andha samayathala, oru unachin poorumaayi erppadukkodi oru sympathy da. Adu ondu oru puranamana oru iyakam illa, adu taan Bhagwan kurippeedikindar, and imperfect capacity of sympathy abdingirar. Imperfect capacity of sympathy da. So, idanla, idan, idan adipadale, nambu oru, oru manade saarunda oru, oru mental construction amipu oruvaakindro, mattarulay puritha oru, mental construction na oruvaakindro. Anaa, idam mulam, ida, ida, anaitthi madipadaila, nambu adayakkudiya, mattarulay patthi adayakkudiya, andha arivu ondu unmeelaye ondu oru real knowledge kede呀adu, abdingirar. Idu ondu oru puranamana oru puridalo, arizalo kede呀adu, abdingirar. Enna kaaranabdina, the true knowledge, unmayana oru arivu, puridal, epodu oru oru abdina. Oru conscious identity, unaru, unaru, unarvin adipadailaana, oru orumaitanmai. Conscious identity, adhan mulamaha ta ondu, otharae sariyaga purundukollamudiyon, abdingirar. Matta indha, indha ami, indhalaa ondu meme bookana, idhala ondu oru indirectana oru sadhanangal, neeradiana sadhanangal kede呀adu, abdingirar. Enna kaaranabdina, appanamay patthi, nambu ondu, endhalavuka nambu previous paragraphilla patho. Consciousa nambala patthi awareness ondu, konjantha, majority unconsciously arukkrom, abdinginun patho. Endhalavuka nambu consciously arukkromma, andhalavuka ta nambu, namala patthi punjukurom. Ma, adhey pole da, on, mattarunra patthi nambu punjukunabdina. Aday kuritha, andha consciousness ondu, we should, we, nambu, adhanode, andha unarvanelayodam, puranama, aikiamana arindada namala mattarulay patthi purundukollamudiyon, abdingirar, adu da ondu, the direct means of getting knowledge abdingirar. Idi, nam sayakkoodi, idella mey ondu, nambodhi pulankalay saarunda arivu, idu ondu indirect means, abdingirar, direct means kede呀adu, abdingirar. Direct means, abdiyabdina, unarvanelayin mulamaha aikia padatal. Ah, identity by conscious, consciousness. Idu da ondu, manugarallakkidiye, oru unmayana, oru, ah, puridalyam, ah, ariveyam, saha manudrakalay koditha oru puridalyam, nyanathiyam, varangam, abdingirar. Enna kaaranabdina, nambu, epo ondu, namakka ondu mattarulay patthi eerakkoodiye ennangal, opinion, sellame, namalode pulankalin adipadigal eerakkoodiye andha arivu, adu ondu, ondu oru indirecta tha ha irukkoon, imperfecta irukkoon, abdingirar, kurayulada tha ha ta irukkoon, abdingirar. Irundhalo, adu ondu oru nadaimari vaargkayki, oru, ah, oru kurigia alavula ah, adu tehvi, adu tehvi ondu avasiyam daan, abdingirar Bhagwan, aday marukkavala. Oru limited levella, adhanode utility, nambu marukka, adu nambu ondu deny panna mudiyadu. Anaa, adu ondu manidu uravakal la ondu, oru kurayulla, oru kurayulla, kurayin, kurayulla oru uravaha taan namayon. Adhey pole, insecure harmony of relations, abdingirar. Andha otthisavi erppotala kodha, adu ondu, innika naalika naa irukkumoyi oru puranamana oru otthisavi, epodu oru mey nelaitthirukkakoodiye, oru neenadhala amipana, oru amipu erppatta, erppatta oru otthisavi aakavo ah, andha enakkam aakavo, adu amaya adu, abdingirar. It may bring an imperfect and insecure harmony of relations with that which we know, abdingirar. We can arrive at a perfect relation with others only by a conscious unity. The conscious unity, abdingiradhu, adu da madhar ondu appvee solittanga, conscious unity, epa kadikapdina, unity between souls, adu da conscious unity. Adu da unmayana, adu, adu da annay, bhagwan annay enna sollaranga. Manugarallade, nambu oru, ondu nambu ondu, endhan adipadaila amayinon, abdina, psychic be, adipadaila amayinon. The relationship, ondu psychic relationshipam matna da ondu, long lastinga irukkoon, matta ellar relationshipon, ondu oru precariousa irukkoon, abdingirar. Bhagwan ondu romba aazhaka, pinnadanda vaathay use panrar. Ah, adu, oru precariousan, andha vaathay use panrar, ellamay ondu eh, epa, ondu, keevurom, abdingira, nelayala da, uravakalna amanjirukku, abdingirar. Ah, adu endha, andha vaartey use panrar, oru romba aazhana vaarte, Bhagwan ondu use panrar, inga.
Sir, appanam ondu, indha empathy concept ondu, nambu kundolamadhyam.
Ah, empathy ondu oru, epa Bhagwaninga, andha, andha, andha sentencea padikka, oru beautiful sentence. If the means of knowledge are indirect and imperfect, the knowledge attained will also be indirect and imperfect. It will enable us to work out with a certain, it will, epa ida, nambu, erkkakoodiye, nam, naam, uravakalay kayalakkoodiye nelayi ta, ninga Bhagwan kurippeedikindar, romba arpudamana oru sentence. If the means of knowledge are indirect and imperfect, naam epa, namaya, namaya epdi kayalikindrumo, andha nelayi solikindrar. The knowledge attained will also be indirect and imperfect. It will enable us to work out with a certain precarious clumsiness. But precarious clumsiness na, oru harai horiyanan nelay, epa andha idu, vundrurom solamudiyadu. Precariousa arukuna, enna, dangerousa, epa onala, andhu uravu, uravukulila sikal varala. It will enable us to work out with a certain precarious clumsiness but still perfectly enough from our mental standpoint, certain limited practical aims, necessities, conveniences, as certain imperfect and insecure harmony of relations with that which we know. But only by a conscious unity with it can we arrive at a perfect relation, abdingirar. Epaa ondu uravakal la ondu, unmayana oru perfecta arukkonda, puranathom, vaayinda oru uravaha, manidu oru amayum, abdina. Only by a conscious unity, conscious unity, abdingadhu, enna, thana, unity with the soul. So, aanmireyana uravakal da ondu, neenadhala nilathinirukkum, matta ellame ondu imperfect relations, andha Bhagwan kurippeedikindar. Ninga sonna empathy garudon, empathy garudan, mattarukal nelayira, nambu, namay vaithu parthal, adu ondu oru mudalpadi da. Anaa, irudiyaha ondu Bhagwaninga sollakkoodiyo, annay, bhagwan, mother sollakkoodiyo, enna, abdina. Psychic levelda irkakoodiye relationship da ondu, epodu oru mey nelathinirukkoon, abdina, banga, enna, adhalo ondu edurbharpa kede呀adu. Adhalo ondu kurayalirukkada, puranathom naadu, ala endhavudman defecta irukkaadu, long lastinga irukkoon. Mattra ellame, manam saarundhadi, sympathy saarundha, matta ellame ondu inga Bhagwan sollakkoodiye, andha oru imperfect levelda, uravakalda, andha, andha nelayi saandhavaadha, andha amayum, abdingirana.
Sir, Bhagwan sonnathu onnu sollran, sir.
I'm putting madam.
Irayivanidam anbu seluthuvadayaduttha, perum pairanandham, manidanul urayum, irayivan meetha anbu seluthuvadu. Angeyum namul palamadangga aanandham perugirathu. Moosamana doru pulumee, verukkattakkadoru kolay pathagan meethu, ningal, anbu seluthavillayenral, ningal aanmapoorumaaga, irayivanay, ungalukul, ey trukkondiirukkeregal, enre, yappadi nambamudiyam. Bhagwan solli.
Romba armay, romba armay, romba armay.
Hmm, sir.
Ah, adu da innoor, innoor thoughts and apharisms, illa kodha Bhagwan ondu solluar, ebdena solluar abdina. Ah, how can you love God when you don't love the God in man? Indha, the exact wordsillan, I said, thiri le, but indha karuthai odayadu, epa nareveru ondu kadavale neesikkuram, abdina, sollar. Manugarallukkulu urayum, kadavale nambu neesikkalay, abdina, epdi ninga unmayana kadavala ondu ninga neesikkamudiyon. Indha karuthai ottiya Bhagwanode, idu na, padichakranana.
Madhritana sir, motherode oru photograph ondu, kay kupramari irukkoon. Adha pathatthu, morthal keekrar, ninga edukka ondu mattavulakka ondu, kay kupi vanangano, abdina, sinndamvarudhu. Naam ondu, avalakulla irkara, irayivanay vanange, enre, na, abdina, sinde. Mother solli, panga, sir, andhu madhri, andhu, ulle irkara, irayivanay patho, ondu sonna, nambu ellathin kaydoramudiyon.
Kandipa, kandipa, kandipa. Aditha part of explanation, pola.
Pasikavam sir.
I'm putting madam, please.
Our sympathy created by love or understanding created by mental knowledge with others is not enough. Such mental knowledge will always be a superficial knowledge of their existence. Therefore, it will be imperfect in itself. Such knowledge will be subject to denial and frustration from the unmastered and unknown reactions from the subconscious and subliminal parts in them and us. We must arrive at a conscious unity with our fellow human beings. Real unity is the unity of souls. It can be established only by entering into that which we are one with them, that is the universal. In the universal consciousness, all of us are united. The fullness of the universal exists consciously only in supermind, which is superconscient to us. As long as we are in our normal consciousness, the greater part of our being remains in subconscious. Therefore, in the normal place of our body, life and mind, the fullness of the universal cannot be possessed. Our lawyer conscious nature is bound by ego in all its activities. It is stained triply by our divided body, mind and life, to the post of differentiated individuality. Only the supermind alone commands unity in diversity. Thank you sir.
Thank you madam, thank you, thank you. Indha, nambu sympathy nareyadathala, namakka oru, silabeer mele sympathy oru. Ah, andha sympathy ondu, oru anbin karanamaha erppadala. Wero oru karunakthinaala, wero, wero karunangalal kodha, andha sympathy erppadala. Idu Bhagwan enna purishinaran, idu ondu oru manam saarunda arivin mulamaha, adu ondu erppaduvadu, daan indha, ah, sympathy oru paridaamam, inbadhu, anaa, idu podaadu, enkindrar Bhagwan, alaka sympathy illaamarkunun, solalay, idu podaadu, abdingirar Bhagwan. Ah, enna kaaranabdina, idu ondu oru meerottamana oru arivin adipadaila amayavadu. Adanaala ondu oru murumayada, oru nelay, adu odayadu. Ah, idu enna, abdina, sila samayathala ondu, ah, yaar mele nambu sympathy vekkaramo, edhu vekkaramo. Andha oravila ondu oru, oru, oru frustration oru. Ah, oru denial, oru marpu oru frustration, aththiya uravakalil kodha, sila samiyam oru frustration erppadu, abdingirar. Ee na andha frustration erppadu, abdina. Illa rendu veerukkaraan. Sympathy vekkarama erkaraan. Yaar mele sympathy vekkaramo, avungeraerkaraan, adu rendu veerukkaraan. Ivunga rendu veerukkatiemi, re, the subconscious levellyon, amshangalirukkindradu, avungode subliminal bahangal, idhala adiunarvahangal, ivunga rendu veerittemeirukkadu. Ivunga irundu veerukkatiemi ondu, adhalirundu varakkoodiye. Enandhal, manidanikonda, adhanmeel aalimay kede呀adu, nambu conscious partla, nambulak aalimay irukkundru, subconscious partla, namakka aalimay kede呀adu. Angeyirundu varakkoodiye, oru edurbharada oru yezichi, absurdianra Bhagwan kurippeedikindrar, adu ondu oru, muttlimana namalode controlay kede呀adu. Adhalala varakkoodiye, andha thakkadalalil naal, itthiya uravakal ondu samayathala baadikkeppadu, abdingirar, idhala ondu oru valuana uravakalaha amayaadu. Manade saarunda oru sympathy, idai saarunda uravakalilla, oru valuana uravakalaha, amayaadu, abdingirar. Idu ondu valuana uravakal, uravakalaha amayaadu, abdina. Andha oru conscious unity, unity based on andha soul, oneness of the soul. Adu daan artam, the real unity, ondu unity of the souls, adu da ondu ah, oru valuana amipaha amayon, adu epodu oru amayon, abdina. Nambu ondu, ellathukkum, ellari minukakkoodiye, andha prabhanja unarvanelayil, nam oyirambodhu da, andha real unity oru. Otherwise, nambu tanipattalalada, sailpadaro. Once nambu prabhanja alavilaan, andha unarvanelaykannam oyirambodhu. Indha orumaitanmai, namalala, ettamudiyam, abdingirar. Indha orumaitanmai, ondu, adhanode murumay, andha prabhanjam tharuviyaa, andha, andha unarvanelayin, adhanode ah, andhaode murumaitanmai ondu, enga kaanapadikindradhu, endal, adhimanasa nelayil daan kaanapadikindru. Supermindla da ondu, enandhal, keennelayala patha abdina, still, namakka ondu, the body, mind, life, abdingirar, oru tanipattu amipukal irukkindru. Supermental levelda unity irukkindru. Enandhal, supermind ondu, epudu mey pakkrom, adu ondu, unity irukkada, diversity irukka, andhatthala, andhatthala ondu, division ondu irukkindru, unity irukkindru. Anal, there is unity in diversity, adu supermind levelda arukku, so, andha levelda, namulak ondu, the real, ah, unity kadikon, abdingirar Bhagwaninga. The normal place la ondu, namakka ondu, the body, mind, life. Indhalai, idhalai, idhalai, irukkara varikka, namulakka, andha unmayana, andha real unity, nambu ettamudiyadu. Enandhal, namalode andha lower consciousness, kee unarvanelayla, nambu ondu, namalode egoin, selvaakka ondu, adhanode meelongi kaanapadikindru. Namalode udal manam vaaru, idan, mo, idanode, andha pirikkappattan nelayalil naal, nam ondu, katthundu kaanapadikindro. Ah, enga ondu unmeelaye, andha, orumaitanmai kaanapadikindru, enra. Unity in diversity kaanapadikindru, endal, supermind, enandhal, supermind teygu namulakku. Angadaan andha prajnana, enkindra, andha apprehending consciousness irukkindru. Anga oneness irukkindru, multiplicity irukkindru. Ah, one ra one ra, one ra one ra, saandu daan irukkindru. So, andha supermental levelda, real orumaitanmai, unity, amayindru, enra karuthai, Bhagwan kurippeedikindrar. So, adhanoda, indha paragraph, modikindru.
Appanam.
Kondan, nambadathase.
Appa ippo.
Solung madam.
Appa ippo, ulhaka irkaran nelayla, we are marching towards that, avlaga, so, ipperukkada.
Towards that, ama.
Imperfect na, hmm.
Ipperukkuru, imperfecta. Ah, enna, nambu, pannala abdina, maximum harmonize pannikala, abdingiranga. Adha, Bhagwan, mother enna sollaranga, adukka, nambu ondu, oru nambikka irundhu, namalala onnu pannamudiyadu, nanike tehvi le. Edhre edhreana nelayalirukkakoodiye manangal, ah, tanipattu amip, individual sirundhalam kodha. Ellathan, pinnadhi ondu oru harmonizing factor, factor irukki irukkoon. Adha, kandupudichu, ninga harmonize pannikina, koduman varikka, harmonize pani vaar, ena, ipperukkara nelayla real unity, enruthu, oru idea la, daan lakshmiha, daan, namalala, kaanak, kaan, kaanamudikindru. Practicala patho abdina, endangal la, possible, anga ondu oru otthisavi erppaduthikondu vaarano, adu ondu mudalpadi, alukka, ondu nambu onmeey seyam irkamudiyadu, epa nambu sayakkoodi, enna, abdina, harmonize pannikar, best, ondu engangal la, muranpada erppadikindru, anga muranpada, thavritthikittay, varano, harmonize, harmony, 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 da, ma, mother and Sharmintha, ondu, overathini sollar, ena adu da first, ninga establish pannunga, appadan idhala pannamudiyon, namalala.
Hmm.
Manugarallakkidiye, epa ondu avasiyam enna, na, edhu saathiyam, mental, harmony.
Harmony.
Ah, annay enna romba teliwa sollaranga, neepa, rendu veer, rendu veer, kandipa differing opinions, sirukkada daan seyom. Irundhalo, ne kandupidi, abdingiranga, edhala ne othu pola, mattavulakka, kandupidichu, adhala ne harmonize pannikko, abdingirar.
Hmm.
Harmonize, pannikamudiyadu, vishyame, irkada, abdingirar, olakathala.
Hmm. Ah, idu patthiya, ondu, oru kartha, ondu, na adhavaraatla share pannikaran, sir.
Dararama solung, madam.
Oru therapist, oru therapist, ondu, na, I'll share it, ne.
Please, 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 thank you, thank you, thank you. We can close the session.
Okay, laypantray, sir, prayiradu.
Sure madam, sure madam, thank you, thank you.